Oh, nice and loud, my goodness. I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We are involved in a special session meeting and we have one item that is our discussion item, and that will be Missouri Sunshine Law Presentation by Brandon Roberts, Director of Sunshine Law Outreach at the Missouri Attorney General's Office. So the way we will proceed, I will turn the microphone over to Brandon, and then he has a presentation. Please feel free to ask questions. I think, Brandon, you said that if they want to ask questions during the presentation, you're good with that? And we're going to go probably till 5:30 or so. We have a 6 o'clock kind of hard stop on this, but I think an hour and a half should be enough time to get ... What do you think, Kevin?
I think, I guess if you don't have an hour and a half to present, but if you do, yeah, definitely a hard stop, probably at least five until seven.
Right, right. So that's kind of what we're looking at. So with that, please proceed and inform us all.
Okay. How are you guys doing? Good? I have a really exciting presentation for you. So the Missouri Sunshine Law is very dry, and so bear with me going through it. If you do have questions, feel free to interject. It's okay. If something doesn't make sense, if you're taking notes, I'm going too fast, stop me and I'll slow down. But I want to make something clear before we get moving forward. I am not an attorney. I do work for the AG's office, but that does not make me an attorney. The only definitives you're going to get, yes or no's from the Sunshine Law is an attorney or your attorney or the court. The court is the one that imposes the penalties for any infractions of the law, okay? So my goal here today is to kind of guide you to best practices, things of that nature. There's two parts of my job. I deal with Sunshine Law complaints that come in from all over the state. I've been, since January, we've had 193 complaints. So it's a passionate thing that people want transparency, right? So that's the point of this law. The other part of my job is to come out here with you folks, and I appreciate you having me because this is the best part of my job, is coming face to face with you all. So a little bit of background on myself. I was a Kansas City firefighter for 20 years. I moved on from there to be a deputy fire chief in Lake Ozark. And there I was sworn in as the custodian of record for them. So I have two sides of the coin. I know what it's like to deal with records requests. I know what it's like dealing with the constituents with those records requests. I know how to respond to them. And there was that transfer of my knowledge of getting to the AG's office to deal with Sunshine Law complaints. I moved on from there. My education's in public admin administration, so I've kind of taken that next step. So that's me. I also want to give some advice on the AG. And this is not insulting anybody's intelligence here at all. Some people have the misconception in the state that they believe that the AG is their personal attorney. He is not, or she is not. They are the state government's attorney, okay? So when people reach out to me, they think that I'm their attorney, or they think the AG can work on their behalf. That's not the case. They can call me and ask me for advice, and I'll guide them to best practices, which I'm going to do here with you today. So any type of state agency that we get Sunshine Law complaints against, whether that be the Department of Corrections, Labor, whatever, that is a state agency that's a client of the AG's office, and we close that complaint and we move forward. So with that, we will get started with this. So again, this is not, you can take this as legal advice, that's fine. Andrew Bailey said it's okay to me for me to tell you that. This is not necessarily a legal opinion, and you shouldn't take that as a yes or no, okay? So the history of the Missouri Sunshine Law was enacted in '73 to ensure transparency in government. Yes, it's 51 years old. I'm not going to say it's old because I'm sure there's people in here that are over 51 years old, but it has not necessarily progressed with society. But we're trying to get there, right? It was signed into law by Kit Bond. It was modeled after the Freedom of Information Act in 1966, signed by LBJ. The Freedom of Information Act was brought into law by Congress because the constituents in the country were scared that the government was too secretive. That was during the Cold War. So that's what FOIA is. There were some hesitations by LBJ by then, but then, of course, it was amended after its signing. But FOIA only applies to FBI, so federal government, IRS, EPA, stuff like that. However, if, I always tell people in the state, if they get a FOIA request, you need to treat it like a Sunshine Law request. The Sunshine Law governs the state of Missouri, okay? So FOIA, you get it, it's a Sunshine Law request, so abide by the Sunshine Law. So the Missouri Sunshine Law applies to states, counties, local public governmental bodies, and I'm going to say PGB. That's local governmental bodies, public governmental bodies. If I say that 1,000 times for that presentation, I'm not going to be able to talk anymore. So please bear with me. So PGB. So it requires public meetings, records, and votes to be accessible to the public, emphasizes the presumption of openness, limiting closed meetings and records to specific exemptions codified within the law. So it's important to understand that any record or anything that a public governmental body does is presumed to be open unless there's a legal reason to close it. So kind of the spirit of the law, James Madison, who had fantastic foresight, one of our forefathers, said, "A popular government without popular information or the means of requiring it is but a prologue to a farce or a tragedy, or perhaps both." So spirit of the law, transparency, right? So it is the public policy of the state that meetings, records, votes, and actions and deliberations of public governmental bodies be open to the public unless otherwise provided by law. The Sunshine Law shall be liberally construed and their exceptions strictly construed to promote this public policy. So strictly construed, meaning that the exceptions need to be strictly with a narrow lens of why something needs to be closed. So the takeaway is the public's business is the public's business, closure is the exception, not the rule. So who does it apply to? So the Sunshine Law applies to public governmental bodies, municipalities, counties, police departments, special districts, committees, and the state of Missouri is full of them. There is 4,000 public governmental bodies in the state of Missouri, and boy, I'll tell you what, it is not easy to get to 4,000 public governmental bodies in the state to teach them the Sunshine Law. There are several districts. There's special taxing districts, library districts, water districts. We are very unique in that sense. We have more public governmental bodies than the state of New York. So we have 6 million people in the state, so per capita, that's quite a bit. So again, 4,000 public governmental bodies in the state, and even those committees of those public governmental bodies would still be, need to follow the Sunshine Law. So if you have a budget committee, an advisory committee, and that advisory committee could be, constitute citizens, right? So the advisory committee could have two commissioners on it and two citizens that are trying to get ideas on wage increases or something like that. Even those parents or subcommittees are still sunshineable because they still report back to that main public governmental body. So again, any public governmental body, see, I told you, PGB, tongue tie. So any legislative, administrative, or governmental entity created by the constitution or statute of the state by order or ordinance of any political subdivision or district. By its very nature, the quintessence of a public governmental body is the power to govern by the formulations of policies and the promulgation of statutes, ordinances, rules, and regulations, or the exercise of quasi-judicial power. So they have the power to create additional government through ordinance or statute. So any committee appointed by, we just talked about this, any committee appointed by or at the discretion of any of the entities in which is authorized to report to any of the above-named entities, any advisory committee appointed by or at the direction of any of the named entities for the specific purpose of recommending directly a public policy would still be considered a public governmental body. Any confusion there? Because I get a lot of questions about subcommittees and stuff like that, so. Okay. So what's not a governmental body, public governmental body? Is Home Depot a public governmental body? HOAs, are they public governmental bodies? How about chambers of commerce? Are they public governmental bodies? They could be. I just got a call today asking me if they're a public governmental body. I said, "Well, are you created by statutes or ordinances?" "No." Okay. So do you take tax dollars? "Yes." Okay. So do you contract with the public governmental body? "Yeah, we carry out their economic policy." Okay. So then you would probably qualify as a quasi-public governmental body. Now, you see, I didn't say yes or no. I said, "Probably." You could. So like I said, I don't give definitives. I just guide you. So if they get a Sunshine Law dropped on them, they need to act accordingly. Judicial entities when not operating in administrative capacity. So judicial entities such as courts are exempt from the Sunshine Law when they're working in a judicious capacity. However, they do work in administrative capacities, they have committees and things like that, so they would have to abide by the Sunshine Law. I get a lot of Sunshine Law complaints on court cases, which that's completely out of my realm, and that's up to the judge, okay? So that's, those are exempt. Nonprofit corporations, unless qualifying as a quasi-public governmental body, just like I said about the Chamber of Commerce. I have a court case there, Mayland versus Association of Community Task Forces, which is ACT Missouri. So that went to trial court, appellate court, back down to the trial court, and there it was stated that most, that a quasi-public governmental body must show both a statutory relationship with a PGB and a primary function that aligns with governmental responsibility. So the Chamber of Commerce, if they carry out some sort of policy for that PGB, they probably have some type of governmental responsibility. Most individual employees or board members. Now, I want to just asterisk this because this is a little caveat here, that's not necessarily true. Most individual employees or board members aren't necessarily exempt, okay? So if I have an AG public government email, okay, so if someone wanted to sunshine my email, right? It's a little nuanced, but they can sunshine my email. They can see what I have in my email, but some of my emails may not talk about public policy or whatever, and those might not be responsive to the request. But those are sunshineable. So I would say that individuals are sunshineable as well as board members. Would you agree with that? Yeah. So I don't think that's necessarily correct. And it's okay. If we get things wrong, I'm not shy from telling you that we do. It is the statute of the state that the Sunshine Law is, that every public governmental body should have a Sunshine Law policy. And you can draft it however you want, but in that Sunshine Law policy needs to have the custodian records in it. You can also, you can frame and outline it, however you charge, fees, whatever. If you don't have a Sunshine Law policy, I suggest you get one today. You can go to our website, and we have a resolution. I'm sure Mr. Milty is familiar with that. It's a form of a resolution. You can pull that language from that resolution and kind of build out your own policy, but you need to have a Sunshine Law policy. And you can have one for your entire organization, or you can have, the city of Kansas City has multiple. So the city of Kansas City's fire department has their custodian records, the city police department has their own custodian records, so each department has its own policy. However you do it, you just need to have a Sunshine Law policy.
Brandon, could I-
Yes, ma'am.
-can I just interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
Just for the audience, we have Brandon's slide deck, and so we will make that available to you. I saw some are trying to write copious notes or take photos. And so we have this available, so if you're comfortable with that, we'll make sure that the staff liaison or however we can get, you know, the chair of the boards, a copy of his slide deck. So just to understand that.
It is a public record you can have. Public meetings. So a public meeting is a meeting of a quorum of public governmental body subject to the Sunshine Law, which public business is discussed, decided, or public policy formulated, whether in person, by email or text, electronic communication, conference call, online chat, or internet message board. If that quorum is together and discussing public policy, it is a meeting, whether, however, whatever platform they're using. Also, the term shall include a public vote of all or a majority of the members of a public governmental body by electronic communication or any other means conducted in lieu of holding a meeting with the members of the public governmental body gathered at one location in order to conduct public business. Questions on that? Pretty straightforward, okay? So what is not a public meeting? The term "public meeting" shall not include an informal gathering of members of a public governmental body for ministerial or social purposes when there is no intent to avoid the purposes of this chapter. If the commission goes out to dinner and they're just out informally, ministerially, not talking about public policy, that's not a public meeting, okay? However, I'd be cautious if public policy does come up, for whatever reason, that one of the commissioners says, "Hey, let's stop that. Don't do that." For instance, Colombo v. Buford. Colombo filed a lawsuit against Buford because that board went out for a Christmas party, very informal setting, and they started talking about employee morale. So Colombo got that, stated that was an improperly held meeting. So the court said that that wasn't the case because Buford didn't, it wasn't a structured meeting, it wasn't gavelled into order, no votes were taken, no trappings in official meeting, and no policy was established. However, the court stated if any one of those benchmarks were met, that it could constitute as a public meeting. So even if they're out together, wherever, and they're not talking about public policy or formulating any type of vote or having any vote, then it's not a public meeting. So you guys are okay. Okay? So there's two types of public meetings that the statute defines, open and closed. Now, some people, some public governmental bodies use executive session, special session, work session, and that's okay. Doesn't mean that you can't use them. But to avoid confusion, we guide public governmental bodies to use open and closed. Because if there's, where I come from, I came from a fire protection district, we used executive session. That could be confusing to some people, and it was. They didn't know it was closed. That's okay. You still use it, but the statute only defines open and closed. Public meeting notice requirements. A notice must include the date, time, date, tentative agenda, and the tentative agenda needs to be constructed in a manner reasonably calculated to advise the public of the matters to be considered, meaning that it needs to be somewhat narrative, okay? The meeting will be constructed, conducted by telephone or electronic means, include the location the public may observe and attend the meeting. So if it's going to be an online meeting, it's going to be in a future slide, an online meeting, then it needs, the notice needs to be posted online. Public meeting notice requirements. A notice must be posted at least 24 hours in advance of all public meetings, but both open and closed, prominent place, similar to what we have downstairs out front, easily accessible to the public, do not count weekends and holidays towards the 24 hours. The location, a place reasonably accessible to the public, like downstairs. A place that is of sufficient size to accommodate the anticipated attendance, like here. And a reasonable effort shall be made to grant special access to the meeting to handicapped or disabled individuals. If there was no elevator, this would probably wouldn't be conducive for that, right? Emergency or short notice meetings. Still must post a meeting notice as soon as practicable and explain the reason for holding the meeting on short notice. In the fire service, things happen, and I needed to have board approval before I made a decision. However, if it's an emergency, I have to make that decision and then go to the board later. If that was held in short order, within that 24 hours, before that 24 hours, it was, hey, make the decision, then we'll post a meeting as soon as possible. That's okay. Things happen. Tensive agenda requirement. This is not necessarily a requirement. The tentative agenda is, but you see two agendas there, one on the left and one on the right, potentially insufficient agenda and likely sufficient agenda, like I said back in the slide here. The tentative agenda needs to be calculated in a manner, reasonably calculated, constructed in a manner reasonably calculated to advise the public of the matters to be considered. So if you look at this one here, the one on the right, pretty much does that, right? If you look at the one on the left, park permits, park permits, New Year's Eve fireworks. So people want to know what you guys are going to discuss, and so just be narrative when you're drafting that agenda. Recording meetings. The body shall allow members of the public to record all open public meetings, both audio and video recording is allowed. That's even if, just like now, we're being recorded. If someone's in here recording a meeting, you cannot tell them they cannot record. It's against the First Amendment right. However, in your Sunshine Law policy, you can establish guidelines of where they record, right? So they're not disruptive. You can say you can do in the back or whatever, but you cannot tell someone that they cannot record a meeting. That's even if they don't tell you they're recording, if it's in their purse or whatever. Just keep that in mind. The body may establish guidelines, like I said, in the Sunshine Law policy. And closed meetings may not be recorded without permission of the public body. That is the only thing that's outlined in the Sunshine Law that's considered a crime, which is a classy misdemeanor. That even goes for the board, commission, alderman, whatever. If they're recording a closed meeting without permission, it's crime. If someone is invited to a closed meeting and they don't tell or get permission to record something, that is a crime. So just keep that in mind as well. Best practice for all, public meeting notices. Post-meeting notices and agendas in the area that is accessible to the public, even after business hours. Post a notice online whenever possible, it's required for online meetings, and include the date, time, the notice and agenda was posted. Include the name and contact information of the records custodian, and be as specific as possible when drafting tentative agenda items. I'll tell you about the tentative agenda and the notice. They can be two separate documents, or they can be one. However, if it's two separate, they just need to be posted together. And I would go ahead and suggest that whoever's posting it, if it's the custodian or the clerk, that they sign that they posted it, and they state what time they posted it when they posted. Meeting minutes. Meeting minutes must include the following information: date, time, place, members present, absent, record of all votes taken, including a vote to close a meeting. Roll call votes must specify each member's individual vote, and a citation of 610.021 for closing a meeting. And if applicable, the good cause to hold a meeting on less than 24 hours' notice. A thing about meeting minutes. So the meeting minutes, the only thing that states about meeting minutes, they don't have to be narrative, they just have to record the votes. And those votes need to be recorded in a way that the public can see who voted which way, okay? Like Mr. Milty voted yea or nay, and so on and so forth. So just keep that in mind as a citizen, that if you request meeting minutes, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get a bunch of notes from that meeting. It could just be the votes, and that's okay, according to statute. Closed meetings are usually permissive, rarely mandatory. There's a lot of public governmental bodies that have decided just to not have any closed meetings, they keep everything open unless they necessarily have to close something, except to the extent disclosure is otherwise required by law. A public governmental body is authorized to close meetings, records, and votes to the extent that relate to the following. There are 26 separate reasons to close meetings within 610.021. There was 25 at the beginning of the year, there's now 26, and there's a bill right now that's been drafted, there's going to be two more. So they're going to, if you just, Kansas has 55, 55 exemptions to close a record. It's quite a lot. Not just a best practice requirement, a public business, all public business must remain open unless specifically authorized to be closed. Liability most often happens from improper closure, not for over-disclosure. I get a lot of calls from people that have released something that they don't think they should have, that they felt like they shouldn't. I tell them it's okay. Over-disclosure is okay. It's improperly closing something that's going to get you in trouble. Common closed meeting authorizations. You see some there, legal real estate hiring, firing. If you look at the very bottom there, it says some sections of 610.021 had event-based cutoffs to open certain items in the future. That's not necessarily true either. Could be, but I don't think it's fully true. Those 610.021 explicitly states that any votes, votes in closed session are closed. So those aren't accessible. So maybe a bid process would then therefore at some later time be an open record. Seal bids and contracts maybe, but as far as legal goes, hiring, firing, disciplining, promoting, may not unless someone requests the record for subsection three. If someone requests a record that subsection three is there, then the body needs to inform the person that affected 72 hours before that record's released. So I don't necessarily believe that all those are going to be open in the future. Subsection 14, appropriate for disclosure by law. We see that a lot as a blanket reason to close something. It really needs to cite another statute or federal law for why that's being closed. Any questions on the closed subsections?
Yeah.
Yes.
You're in your executive session-
Yes.
-and you are going to let someone go.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. You're in a closed meeting, you're going to let somebody go. Once that that meeting is over, then are you saying within 72 hours of that, your decisions in all are made public?
If it's requested.
If it's requested, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and if it's going to be, if it's requested and you're going to release it, you need to let that person know.
Okay.
That it's going to become-
Like a regular Sunshine Law request.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Good?
Mm-hmm.
Good? Statute sets forth two methods to close a meeting. A public governmental body may vote by an affirmative public vote of a majority of a quorum of the body to close a meeting, or they can post a notice to close a meeting. So those are two sections, or two methods. So I want to talk about the closed sessions for a second. There was a lawsuit out there that somebody filed against a board because they thought they improperly closed a meeting. So during discovery of that lawsuit, the board was recording the closed session with everyone's approval to record that closed session. So during discovery in the lawsuit, the recording was listened to, and there was 45 minutes of that closed recording that wasn't closed. So they deviated from whatever reason they closed the meeting, and they were talking about some really bad stuff. They were talking about constituents, how they looked, how they voted, and it just, that all became open. So we tell public governmental bodies, if you're going to close something, stick to the matters, do not deviate from why you closed a meeting. Best practice for closed meetings, while the two subsections of 610.022 appear to operate independently, it may be useful for an agency to apply both processes when closing a meeting. Some people adjourn, vote to end the open, and then vote to go to close, but however you do it, there needs to be a vote to go to closed, okay? By announcing a closed meeting with a public notice, including the citation, still you can, you can post a notice of the closed meeting, and stick to the topic at hand, do not deviate from the limited reason authorized to close the meeting. Any questions about meetings before we get into a record? Good? So, yes, ma'am?
I have a question, right?
Yeah.
So you have a meeting.
Yeah.
Do you follow the agenda?
Yes.
Right? You've got people there, then you close the meeting, but then you still sit around and talk and engage the participants that are there, and you know, the theory that it's off the record.
Yeah.
But you've got a quorum there, you've just come from a meeting, you're discussing whatever business of the entity. Not appropriate?
Just to be clear, this is how it goes.
I did say-
No, no, it's fine. No, I get it, I get it. So you close the meeting, everyone's still here.
Everybody's still hanging around.
Just the quorum?
The quorum plus the public.
Plus the public. If no public policy is being discussed or no vote's taken, then I wouldn't say that's wrong, that there's discussions. But I will say this about the tentative agenda, just remind me something, okay? The tentative agenda, you've got to be careful with the tentative agenda because it's 24 hours in advance of the meeting of the matters that you're going to be talking about, right? So if you have, now, with the tentative agenda, public comments, there's nothing in the statute that says you have to have public comments. That's just civic engagement that public governmental bodies utilize, and they should utilize for transparency reasons. But if there's going to be a discussion from the public to address an issue, and the issue that comes up is not on the tentative agenda, that would require you to amend the agenda. That's something that you're going to handle right then and there. I would advise anybody that brings, any board member that deals with an issue that a citizen brings up, that you feel like that needs to take place right then and there, an emergency, maybe amend the agenda, but if it's an issue that can wait 24 hours, or the next day, or the next week, do that, okay? Get the, get, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll delve a little bit further because that's what the need of, kind of what the issues that we have.
Okay.
It really comes down, in my mind, it comes down to spirit of law versus the letter of the law.
Yeah.
And so, here's the scenario.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's have some transparency, let's have this discussion.
Right, right.
So we banter about that.
If, okay, if someone brings an issue up, right, that doesn't, this is just my opinion, okay? And I've dealt with this at the fire district too because we had public comment. People come in and address whatever is going on. The board would interact with them, you know, but no, nothing was formulated, okay? Just a very informal interaction with the public because the public comment's there and they can talk. It's not just for them to vent and then for the board to sit there and look, you know? You can engage with them, but the thing about it is, if that engagement would then begin a process to fix the issue and a vote needed to be taken, a policy needed to be created to address the issue, then that is, that's the moment that you need to say, timeout, we can address this at a later date.
Absolutely. So about my issue, I see this not just in our department, I see it all over.
Sure.
People come up to the podium, say things, ask a question, and they're silent. They won't respond to them. They won't, hey, the roads need to get fixed, and that's not, you know, they won't give them simple answers because we can't talk about it. But my thought is, no, we can certainly talk about it. We're engaging with the public, in public, on the cameras, as opposed to bringing them in my office back down to the courts and say, no, this is what's going on. We're not making a policy, we're not taking a vote, we're just having a discussion on a topic they brought up.
Yeah. I mean, civic engagement's the point of the law, spirit of the law, right? But engaging with your constituents, in my mind, legally would be okay. But if, like I said, if any type of public policy was going to be formulated with that, then that, no. You've got to wait. Or if it's an emergency, then you could amend the agenda and then deal with it then. I will tell you about the amendment of the agenda. It would be, in my mind, okay to do it once in a while, but if they continue to do it every time, a public comment would then institute or instigate that, you know, that amendment, then that could become a problem because there's a fire district just in Kansas City, South Kansas City, just got sued for amending their agenda every damn time. And it was, it looked like they were, to me, they were hiding stuff, okay? So they weren't, the tentative agenda wasn't really calculated or constructed in a manner for the, you know? So they got sued. It's in appellate court right now and the AG's office submitted an opinion to get an idea or for the court to state, give a better definitive on what a tentative agenda means. Okay?
No, that in person, but I'm going to push out this one more time. I'm on the commission, so I'll sit up there and someone in public comment comes up and I'm going to engage with that person. We're not making a policy here, we're not taking votes, but I'm going to engage with that person on whatever topic it is that they're bringing up and give them my opinion on that topic or whatever's going on with that. We're going to have an engaged conversation. No policy, no vote, a real table.
I would leave that up to the commission.
Which one?
This one, and I would leave it up to, I would leave it up to your attorney on how that should go. But in my mind, if it's civic engagement, if you're talking to your constituents and you're just addressing them informally, I know they're sitting up there and there's no public policy being formulated, no votes being taken, I think that falls under the informal and extirpation.
My perspective, since you brought it up. Because it is a really interesting issue for us.
Sure.
And I think, I think, I'll just use the road issues, that has come up. So if the person comes up and says, my road's terrible, and we know that we have a five-year plan, and say, hey, we've got a five-year plan on the committee, I think that's perfectly fine because that policy's already been implemented. If also, we know that that person's road is set for resurfacing in a month, that policy's already been implemented. And that's just sharing information that's already out there. It is different though, because you know, you used the word engage, I get worried about the idea of creating policy. So when you say, well, tell me about your road. Is it good, is it bad? Oh, that's terrible, that's not good, we need a quarter mile nap. You know, now all of a sudden it feels to me more like a public policy discussion as opposed to the sharing of information or trying to get the individual maybe directed the right staff member. Because that's also a good approach, is having these right staff members to help you with that. So that's the thing, and Commissioner Johnson and I have had some really good conversations about this very topic.
Yeah.
But that's where I get worried, and the problem is, it's a bit of a handled response. Once you start that conversation, who stops it when it goes from maybe informational to policy? And that's the hard thing. Because everybody's trying to do the right thing. Commissioner Johnson was passionate about, this is an element of transparency.
Yeah.
And you know, I wear the, I'm just always a little concerned when we start having what I consider policy discussions that haven't been done.
Here's the other side of the quorum. We're all intelligent people, and we have to kind of keep that in our own mind. Okay, I'll answer this guy's question. But then if the guy starts pressing, then say, well, listen, we'll investigate this and we'll get back to you. And let it go with that, you know? We don't want everybody up there to get in the middle of the fight on the guy's road. And I think we have to kind of monitor ourselves on where we stop that discussion.
So I would say, a little bit with Commissioner Johnson's point about engaging and then, you know, Commissioner Johnson said, well, I'll say my opinion, right, on whatever the topic is. Well, then if it starts going around to all people on a committee or on the commission giving their opinion, now we are kind of on that verge of, well, is this public policy? We now know where everybody stands on it, even though they haven't taken a formal decision. And so I think that's, Kevin's point is, we walk a really fine line there about how far do you go in those kinds of situations?
Does, yes sir.
The question was asked, who stops, who decides, when we've hit that point, unfortunately, it's usually me. I would say that, yeah, you're right when what Diana was saying about when it starts to go through the different commissioners, we are getting, in my mind, close to polling the commission, which is obviously illegal. I think where the line kind of breaks, at least for me, would be, it's like if we do not know particularly where that, when that road is scheduled, because, well, we've got to fix this guy's road. Now we're starting to direct staff.
Policy.
Now we're doing policy. And one of the things that I try to do is, I try to catch the horse before it gets out of the barn.
Yeah.
Which is not always popular, but I try to caution commissioners or I try to say, you know, we're getting kind of close here. Sometimes that is taken to heart, sometimes it's not. It just depends, and quite honestly, sometimes I'm wrong. But I think that that is one of the things that we have to kind of work through as we go. I think it's probably a good idea just to say, we have Tom here from Rose, maybe if you chat with him, he can give you some more detailed information. That way, to Commissioner Johnson's point, we are informing, not issuing direction and not engaging in a conversation that may well take us into a polling the commission situation.
Yeah, just like your attorney said about the policy that already been established. Sharing that basically is a sunshine. That's fine, that'd be good. So do all the commissioners get to speak to the public when they come up here, or is it just you?
What I usually end up doing is saying, I ask the citizens to address their comments to the commission. A lot of times, the vast, vast majority of the time, it's like, hey, you guys doing a good job on the roads. And we all say, yeah, thank you very much, and that's, that is no problem. I don't know that generally they are necessarily specifically, they can be, but generally it's to the commission because that's what I request. A specific commissioner may well engage, and in my mind, one of the things that I have been holding as allowable is a clarifying question. And that is, well, my roads, my roads are terrible. Well, you know, and they say, well, what do you mean by terrible? Or something like that. That's not a very good example, but you see what I mean? I don't, at least I have not in practice held that clarifying questions are necessarily taken as close to that line.
Yeah. Yeah. It may be a good idea, like if you guys had someone that could call balls and strikes during that time, so that if that line was getting approached or being, getting ready to be crossed, that someone would say, okay, stop, we can, let's wait.
That's when I throw Kevin under the bus.
That's our problem.
Well, I mean, I don't want to get you guys in trouble either, because I know you guys want to do good for your constituents, but at the same time, you guys got to do it with them wrong. I get it, I mean, I really get it. But again, I keep saying where I came from, but the board I came from, the citizens that came to the means addressed the board president. They addressed the board, the board president was the president of that board, and the board president was the only one that spoke. Now, the other two board members would engage with the board president about what the person's saying. It's really, it seems weird, but it's not, it worked. And the attorney would be sitting there and he would be calling balls and strikes. It wasn't like, it wasn't very, it wasn't engaging, but I mean, it was, it was good to have him there, the attorney there to say, this is going to have to wait, you know?
But you're not talking like you're going to talk.
Yeah. I don't want to make it sound bad, I really don't. I mean, you guys can talk, I don't, but I'm just saying, if you get to that point where you're getting ready to cross that line, you would hope that someone would step up saying, do we need, do we need to do this today? If we do, then let's talk about amending it, or can we wait until a future meeting? Right? That would be my recommendation, and I'm not coaching you guys, I'm not, but I don't want to see you guys get in trouble.
So you're here today and we brought you here to tell me I'm right.
No, 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 I'm not going to do that. I just don't, don't, I would say, if you engage with citizens, just be careful with the public policy discussions, shut it down. If it gets to that point and you have to vote on something, don't, wait.
See, that's what I don't like, because what often happens is if we get shut down better than I think it should get shut down, and we don't take that person aside afterwards, outside of public view, and having that same conversation, you have two or three of us.
The quorum's not there, right?
Which to me is, it is no quorum, but there's no public, there's no transparency, there's no, okay, what are you doing? Why can't the public see this conversation?
I understand, I get it, I really do.
And many of these conversations, it's not, it's not everybody talking, it's just one or two who actually be, having a passion about whatever topic it is and they're engaging in a conversation. I think it's shut down to, I don't think it's a policy issue, I don't think it's, I think it's just engaging with the public, because I can't stand it when the public comes to the podium, asks a question, makes a comment, and you're just dead silent, okay, thanks, go sit down and go back home.
Yeah.
No, that's not why we're here. And I see that, not just here, I see it happening in city councils and all over the place. Like they feel like they can't even talk to someone from the public because it's not on the agenda. In my position, well, it is on the agenda, public comment is on the agenda. We're not making a policy, so we're not talking about a topic that we're going to vote on or anything like that, so. So, okay, I got it, we're back to where we were.
Clear as mud, I'm sorry.
It came up at one point, it's not come up under the current ambition, but I think it's something, as we talk about this, what we're talking about is the behavior and discussion of commissioners. The public cannot violate sunshine law. So I don't want anybody from the public thinking, I don't want to comment because I might be violating something. That is not, the sunshine law in that case is not made to govern the public's comments, it is made to govern...
Well, the public government bodies, yeah.
So don't feel like you can't get up and say whatever you need to say.
Yeah. Yeah. Anymore on that? You guys good? Did I clear anything up?
Clear as mud.
Okay, I'm sorry. So let's talk about records. I don't know how much time we have left, how much time we have left? How much time we got left? I don't have a...
Here you have it, it's five twelve.
Five twelve, okay. Records are important, so I'll slam through this real quick. So any records, so what is a record? Anything that can record, right? Paper, email, thumb drive, tape, videotape, CD-ROM, microfilm, anything that the body obtains that can record something is a record. It's a very broad term. So that's what a record is. So what records must be retained? So the sunshine law doesn't govern retention schedules. The Secretary of State handles retention schedules and you can go to the website and check what your retention schedules are for your documents. However, I will advise you that if you get past your retention schedules, and you can destroy your documents. Don't keep them on hand if you don't have to, if you meet your obligations. Public records. Electronic transmission of public records, always remember, the general rule of public records is any record, whether written or electronically stored, retained by or of any public governmental body. But also under 610.025, an electronic record may be considered a public record if it is sent to a quorum of officials, which includes the sender and relating to public business. Which one? From the top? Okay, I know there's a question, I know there's a question. It's okay. But also under 610.025, an electronic record may be considered a public record if it is sent to a quorum of officials, which includes the sender and relating to public business. Is there going to be a question about group chats? Because this is usually where it comes up.
Search on text.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, any questions about group chats?
Well, I'm just curious, what's the latest interpretation out of the office? So very clearly, county-owned computers, county-owned cell phone, county-owned email, public, 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 right? You do something on county email, it can be public, it can be searched, it can be requested. What's the office's latest view of personal cell phones and personal emails that may on occasion engage in a public issue?
Mm-hmm. I will, this, so when I was doing these presentations, Andrew brought me into his office and we had this similar discussion. And this is not, don't take this as defended, like the Attorney General said this, like, okay?
I think this is one of the trickiest issues.
It's very tricky, and it's one of those things, Andrew, since...
Where everybody lives digitally now.
Andrew is an elected official and his personal phone, if he's talking about public business, is most likely going to be polled, right, for public record. I would say this about group chats on personal cell phones, just to kind of avoid any of that in discovery, if you get sued, okay? Is if you're going to have group chats and you're talking about public policy, get it off your phone as soon as possible, send it to your county email or send it to your county custodian, and don't do it. Now if...
It's slammed up, there's a quorum, right? You know, like a bit's slammed up, they're out, they're in the back.
Yes, yeah.
So, I know, I'm also, I'm also, I'm more curious about what online, you know?
No.
Commissioner Johnson's personal...
If it's you and another commissioner, it's not the quorum, no. And I'll be completely honest, and I'm not saying this commission is doing it, I would never say that, but there are public bodies out there that take advantage of that to poll their members. It is what it is. But they're not violating the sunshine law. Okay? Any more questions on that?
So, because polling is sort of that other gray area.
Yes.
Polling of a government body or a committee, I'm polling, I'm talking to you individually. By the end of the day, I know exactly, there's been a decision made, but it's done individually.
Yeah. And if that ever comes out in a public record, an email or something like that, then that could be, then your personal device could be polled for the polling. So I would just be very mindful of that. It would have to come out in a lawsuit, like discovery in a lawsuit, okay? But public officials, I mean, it's my personal cell phone, I have my AG phone, I do all my public business on my AG phone. I don't talk about anything public on my personal phone. So I'm not worried about my personal phone, but if I did, I talk about public business on my personal phone, then that could be a public record. Okay? Yes?
I had a staff member ask about, we utilize, and they don't keep factor of authentication, sorry. And we had a staff member ask that if their personal cell phone is used to receive the code that they need to access, you know, the bank to access their, the department or the county credit card, if that would then subject their cell phone, their personal cell phone to any type of public scrutiny?
I'll try my best to kind of concrete this for everybody, so they don't freak out about public records. It's, a public record is whatever the public body obtains, maintains, retains, okay? Does that make sense?
Yes, I just, that was my thought, but I needed to ask, they said I would ask the authority.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if I'm that, but yes.
Today you are.
Yeah. But like I said, the elected officials talking about public business on their personal phone, it won't become a problem until you get sued. on their personal phone, it won't become a problem until you get sued. Okay?
But it's not good practice.
It's not good practice. Best practice is, if you talk about public business on your personal phone, get it off there, and send it to your public email, or to your custodian. However that, however that would work for you. Is that fair? Makes sense?
Because there's sunshine, and then there's litigation.
There's sunshine and litigation, yeah.
And if there's litigation, and it is discovery that they're requesting, then it could pull it.
It, it could. I mean, the subpoena would have to be very specific, but yes.
That's why we encourage all public business.
I would, I would, yes. Get a stip, get a, get a, get a government-issue phone. I, I'm just, I just wouldn't do it. That's just me. I'm not telling anyone to, what to do. I just, I wouldn't do it. Um, so best practice, each member of a public governmental body should have a government issued, government-issued email account. There are public governmental bodies out there that do not. They still use their personal email account, and we try to tell them, don't do that, because then all that stuff in there becomes, uh, public record. Um, so we, we guide them to get their own Gmail account or something that just deals with public business.
So is it based on that, and is it a recommendation that our boards and commissions, that are clear, that are citizens, that serve on advisory capacity, actually have a county email address, so that if we are communicating with them, or?
Hmm. Yeah, if that's feasible, but I, but if, if it's not feasible, then I would just generate a new email, uh, and that just talks about public business. So my public business would just go to that, that email, not my personal. Just avoid any visions of impropriety. Um, yeah? Okay? Uh, so request for public records. A requester can submit an open records request in multiple ways, uh, in person, phone call, email, letter. Uh, the sunshine law doesn't require a specific submission method, nor does the sunshine law require that someone identify themselves. So they can submit a records request anonymously. The public governmental body must act on the request as soon as possible, but no later than three business days after the custodian receives it. So if I'm the custodian of record for the AG's office, and I get back to my office tomorrow, I open my email, boom, there's a records request Friday morning, can anyone do the math and tell me when I have to respond to that request?
What if the request for the public records that the, um, customer has requested is not found within those days? Do I have to at least give them notice that we are searching for their request, and we ask for more time?
A response has to be given within three days after the receipt. Three business days. So if you say, I need more time, that's, that would be, we're about to get there into second, that would be a reasonable cause.
If I'm on my three days then, if I say I need more time?
I would give them a hard and fast date, how much time you need.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, be very careful with that, because the governor's office got, got slapped for that. So, uh, gross fee persons. And, and using attorney time to, using their attorney's time to collect their fees, so, who wouldn't go? Yeah, Andrew was involved in that, so it's all good. Uh, address request to the custodian of records by name or by title. Uh, Starr versus Jackson County Prosecutor. Uh, so I want to stress this for requesters that are in the room. Uh, so the request must be received by the custodian to trigger the response. Okay? So Starr filed a lawsuit against Jackson County Prosecutor because he submitted a request to the Jackson County Prosecutor that was getting fulfilled, and for some reason, it dropped to the cracks. So during the lawsuit, the Ca- Jackson County Prosecutor herself was the custodian of record, and she never saw it. So the court stated, well, then, the, the, the records request must get to the custodian to trigger the response. However, I would be mindful that you have a very good sunshine law policy, and everyone knows who your custodian is, just in case they get a rec- records request in their email, that they can get to as soon as possible, and not be passing around the office. Okay? To avoid, to avoid that triggering. Uh, we tell requesters to phrase requests with specific, specific, I can't say it, specific language, uh, that a reasonably competent custodian of records would understand. And if you don't understand something as the custodian, reach back out to the requester, to ask them to clarify whatever it is they're asking for. Uh, best examples for the requester would be to utilize state ranges, names, or titles of employees. Topics of the documents include a fee threshold and a requested format, whether in-person, paper copies, electronic documents. Um, I will tell you this about information. Um, you do not have to provide information to be responsive to a request. So if someone requests information, um, for how much did the commission spend on coffee in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five? If you do not have a record responsive to that request, you do not have to provide them information. Okay? However, you could tell them, since, if you have a budget, right, and that budget tells you exactly how much coffee that was spent in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, you could say, well, we don't have records responsive to that request, however, we can give you these records, and you can total that off yourself. Does it make sense? You do not have to provide information to responsive, to be responsive to a request, but you still have to respond. Um, public governmental bodies must act on their request as soon as possible, no later than three business days after the custodian receives it. And if records are not provided in that three-day period, give a detailed explanation of the cause for further delay, and provide the place and time, earliest time and date that the record will be available for inspection. And there must be a reasonable cause for delay, not a legal reason, just a reasonable cause. Requesters are confused, that they think that a legal reason is why something, there needs to be reasonable legal reason. No, just a reasonable cause, volumous amounts of records, short staffed, just a reasonable cause for the delay. Best practice, address, address any fees, estimates in the initial response letter, and do the initial search and estimate how many documents may be responsive, and identify that in the letter. Uh, some best practices when responding, all employees should know the identity of their custodian. Uh, employees should forward public records requests to this custodian, they should know that in your policy. And records can be held in more than one loca- location, so be diligent in your search. Contact the requester in writing, and note the day the initial three-day response was sent. Confirm the body's understanding of what is being requested, and engage with the requester to clarify any items addressed, and address possible fees. And confirm the way that all, that records will be produced, and be very specific when explaining reasons why records cannot be, be provided within three business days. Uh, there's something I want to address about fees, um, real quick. So the statute states, you know, ten cents per copy, uh, standard, standard paper copy, and then using the lowest salaried employee that could do the work, right? However, if you, if the custodian makes twenty-five dollars an hour, and the clerk makes, just, just hypothetical, and the clerk makes thirteen dollars an hour, um, and the custodian's the only one that could do it, uh, then the custodian can charge twenty-five dollars an hour. If the clerk can do it, then thirteen dollars an hour. And it's just research time, actual cost. So if it only takes a half hour, make sure you, you invoice that out, break that down for them. If a director is the only one who makes seventy-five dollars an hour, is the only one that can access the records you're requesting, it takes him five hours, them five hours to get those records, you can charge actual cost, so that's seventy-five dollars. People get upset about it, but it's the way it is. But you could, you could, you know, um, rein in they're being upset by invoicing out and breaking down that cost for them.
So, can we, you know, more and more information is being put electronically via court decisions out on the website?
Yeah.
So if you get a request, you can simply just respond and refer them to the website?
No, you gotta, you can respond to it, but you can also say, and you could say, respond to it, but in the response letter, you can say, in the future, you can go here to see if those records are just for you.
Oh, we still have to pay all of us.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
You could say, hey, it's here.
Yeah.
You're welcome to give it to us.
Yeah.
Or, or you're charging a price to get it to you, or I can get it to you.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah. Yeah. You'd still have to be responsive to it. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? That happens a lot. Yeah. Um-
What if you provide a link?
Provide a link?
Provide a link to the documents. Is that sufficient enough responsive? They say, I want it in electronic format.
I would respond within the three days, business days, and I would say, I ha- I would, I would gather the records, and I would tell them, here's the link if you want it, but if you don't, here's the records.
Okay.
Okay? That way, they could, they know in the future to maybe go to that link, if there, if there's more records that they, they want in future. But you still have to be responsive to the request. Okay? Um, production. If there are no records responsive to a request, the body will need to send a response to the requester to let them know, redact when possible, instead of closing an entire record. And if you're gonna redact something, make sure you tell them legally while you're redacting. That's closing a record. Obvious reasons for closure would be a work product, legal reasonings, uh, juvenile records. Um, you can, some public governmental bodies are having their custodians, after a meeting, stamp documents, or, or whatever, that are, are closed, with, with counsel's guidance. So that's just help, it's helpful when you're researching documents for a sunshine request. The sunshine law does not require a public governmental body to create a new record upon, upon request, but only to provide access to existing records, held or maintained by the body, just like I said about information. If you provide an information of a record you don't have, you just created a record. So don't, don't put yourself in that, that position. Uh, closed records. Same provisions apply to six ten point zero two one. If records responsive to a request are closed, provide a response that generally describes the material exempted, unless that description will reveal the contents of the exempted information. So if you have to close an entire record, just tell them why and the legal reasoning for it, and you can explain to them that, that this material is, is exempted, or, uh, this is closed, and if, if you had to tell them why it's closed, then that would, that would, uh, therefore, yes, ma'am.
I'll let you go.
Therefore, would basically tell them what's in the record, then don't, don't do that. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any obligation to provide a record in the format that it's being requested if you're essentially creating a record to provide it in the format? Do you understand what I'm asking? If we've got a very specific request for data that exists, but it's not compiled, it has to be pulled from a variety of different places, essentially creating a new report?
Probably not. But, like I said, you can reach back out and tell them-
There's four different reports that you can have.
Yes.
So we're not going to be for that, that you're, or in which you're asking.
Exactly. Yes. Yeah. Um, best practice, when closing records, provide information to the requester about what documents have been closed in the final response letter. And the public governmental body must always provide a written statement for the grounds of denial, uh, that's even when you, when you close something. Under section, section six ten point zero two three, subsection four, upon request within three business days. Um, you guys can read through this if you want, but I'm gonna ask you the question, if anyone wants to answer it, that's, that's great, too. So, uh, how much can a public governmental body charge to fulfill a records request? Ten cents per page, and the lowest hourly rate of the employee capable of doing the work? Yeah? Makes sense? Okay? Our board goes into closed session, and we don't know what they are going to talk about. Don't they have to let us know why they are closing the meeting? Now I'm gonna stop. So, actual costs. So if you have to buy a thumb drive, if the public governmental body has to buy a thumb drive or something like that, because someone brings a thumb drive in, you're like, no, I'm not gonna put that in my computer, I don't know what's on it, and you supply them the thumb drive, you can charge them the actual cost for that thumb drive. Okay? So actual costs, like whatever it is, three dollars, five dollars, however much a thumb drive costs. Um, again, our board goes into closed session, and we don't know what they're gonna talk about. Don't they have to let us know why they are closing the meeting? Yes. Right? So they have to cite whatever subsection of six ten point zero two one they're, they're utilizing, and also in a post-it notice, they have to do the same thing. Uh, I was told my request would be ready in two weeks. Does it, the sunshine law say they have to give me the records in three days? They said, it says they have to respond to you in three days, or provide the records. So if it takes you two weeks, make sure in your response to them that you let them know it's gonna take you two weeks. Give them a hard and fast date. And if, if you get to that, end of that two weeks, and you still need more time, then reach back out to them, let them know, it's gonna take us an additional amount of time. I get a lot of, I get a lot of complaints about them getting kicked down the road, uh, but it is what it is. There's nothing you can do. As long as they keep responding to them, that, that's fine. Can a public governmental body add items to the agenda after it has been posted? This is a hot topic. Uh, typically, no, but if, if something were to happen, uh, emergency-wise, then yes, they can amend the agenda. Uh, also, if something happens emergency-wise before you had a meeting, and it can't wait till the next week's meeting, then you can, you can make that decision quickly and post that meeting as soon as possible. But, but make sure, this would be the only, this, this would be the only time in the minutes that you would want to be narrative, is that, you know, we had this meeting at this time, uh, short of twenty-four hours because of whatever. Okay? So just be, just be reason, just be, give reason why you deviated from the twenty-four hour notice.
Well, but so for clarification.
Yes.
You can, if you post a meeting.
Yeah.
You can amend that as long as it's before the twenty-four hour period.
Yes.
Right? Because most agencies, most committees-
Yeah. If you posted a Monday of a meeting on Friday.
Right.
You can, you can amend it.
You can amend that all of the-
Before twenty-four, yes.
Twenty-four hours.
Right. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Uh, members of the board get together and talk about business outside of meetings, is this okay? Well, how many are there? Yeah, how many are there? Would be my question. Uh, but if there are quorums together, then no, that's not, that's not necessarily okay. Uh, board members email each other about public business, is that considered a meeting? Again, if it's a quorum, yes, it could be considered a meeting. So just, uh, I have a, a serial complaint guy who complains about a certain public governmental body that's doing everything to the T. He still complains about it. And he is demanding that the custodian add the board of trustees on the email that he keeps sending. And, uh, she asked me what she should do about that. I said, do not do that, because you've put all the boards of trustees and CC'd them on an email, and they happen to just respond to that guy, that's considered a meeting, and he just entrapped them. So don't, don't do that. Just be careful when you guys are emailing together. Uh, it's the quorum that's considered a meeting.
Can I, if you say, a commission has, a commissioner has some information, but she wants to get out to the rest of the commission during the weeks of time, she can send out an email to the whole commission, maybe VCC everybody, so they can't even respond back, uh, which is information only that's going out, no conversations taking place or anything? That's allowed?
I'd be very careful, and I would just do it individually. Uh, that's me. But if you VCC, no one can reply, then that would safeguard from, from it, consider it a meeting, because no one's replied to it. Would you?
Yeah. It, it would be possible, you know, if you could task staff to be the distributor of that information.
Yes. Yeah. If they're administrator or something, you know, or the, the clerk.
Which is true. They usually get one copy, and there's always a file of that type of communication, so there's always a contributor. But I prevent them from-
Replant.
From responding to it.
Yeah. 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 Good idea.
And I would say, you know, so one thing I would get worried about is, the distribution of information is one thing. If you said, if you, for example, said, hey, this thing's coming up, I just want everybody to watch that, and vote yes. Uh, even if you're a trustee, I, I know that's problematic. So when you start to share your line on a public policy topic, I think it's problematic, you know?
Yeah, I, I would agree. Yeah.
That's probably not part of it.
Yeah.
Even if you aren't necessarily engaging, you're still sharing your line on a policy topic, and everybody gets to see it, and we can see it outside the public.
Yeah, and it goes back to that polling deal, too, so.
It's a different way to do it, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Uh, a requester refuses to use our request form and sends numerous emails or requests for records. Can we require that they fill out a standard, no. You can't, you can't make someone fill out a form to, uh, to fill out a records request. However, you, if you do have a form, and that's what you utilize for records request, don't do that. That's not something that, that's not mandated. But if someone comes in, walks in, or someone calls in, you can guide them to that form to help kind of keep that records request on file, so it doesn't fall through the cracks, but you cannot mandate them to fill out a form. Uh, who can impose penalties for the sunshine law? Not the attorney general, not any other attorney, a court. A court's the only one that can impose penalties. How may we vote to state our motion when we want to enter a closed meeting? There's a sample motion there, everyone's different. Uh, who is subject to the sunshine law yesterday?
What's the remedy for violations of sunshine?
Oh, the violations?
Yeah.
I knew you'd ask me that, because I, someone asked me that yesterday, and I got it wrong. I didn't get it wrong, it was right, but it's so knowingly, if you, if you knowingly violate the sunshine law, it's a thousand dollars per count. If you purposely, no. Purposely violate it, it's five thousand. And so, uh, account, per count.
Plus attorneys.
Plus attorney's fees.
Which all of them do.
Plus attorney's fees.
You don't have to tie our terms, you know, that.
Yeah. But, but I will, but I will add this. The same, some, similar thing happened to a, a public governmental body that tried to impeach their mayor. They did it improperly in a closed meeting. Properly, the mayor sued him. They, he won, right? So they avoided that action. But the court stated to them, they had, they got charged a fee, and all that, the fine, all that. The court stated, however, you did this wrong, but you can do it right by doing this. So they void the action.
Do those penalties go to a specific individual, or do they go to, in our case, the county?
It depends on who's defending you. It depends on who's defending you, if, if that's the county, or if that's, if you have your own individual.
Okay, I mean, with the policy respect, too?
Yeah. Yeah. So when, so-
So, when they're trying to-
Yeah, we, we just filed a lawsuit against the city. Um, we petitioned the court to file a lawsuit against the city, uh, out in St. Louis, uh, for completely ignoring our outreach efforts for sunshine law compliance. Um, and we filed the ci- we filed against the city, when it was the board themselves that made the decision to violate the sunshine law. Um, so the city attorney called us and says, hey, you're suing the wrong damn people. Don't sue the city, sue the board that did it. And I, they asked me that question, an attorney asked me that question, who should we sue? I said, why are you asking me? The people that did the action would be the ones that need to be held accountable, not the entire city, right? So, but anyway.
Not the entire commission, or the county board?
Yes. Yes. So it'd be, it would be the individual commissions, if you'd be, that would be the ones that would probably be on the court case, not the commission. It'd be e- each commissioner.
I'm just trying to figure out how much money Joe has in that to pull me out.
Yeah. It could get, it could, it could get very lictitious and very expensive.
And we're not-
I could say that. Yeah. Just, just be careful, you'll be okay. But the thing about, uh, about us, you know, we, we take a progressive discipline approach, we don't like suing people, we don't want to do that, 'cause it costs taxpayers money. Um, so, uh, we, we, we try to settle, that's what we're gonna do with what I just mentioned about the lawsuit, is we're gonna settle with them for me to go out there and train them, and call that good. I think, I don't wanna say that for sure, but I think that's the way it's gonna go. Yes, sir. That's just an example, you don't have to do it that way. Just make sure you cite why you're closing the meeting, basically. Okay?
To that point, my mind-
Yes, sir.
Because, generally, we make that, the purpose is whatever is the state statute, real estate, contractual, personal, whatever. Sometimes people may say, "Well, what are you really talking about?" I guess my question to you is, is it sufficient as far as the, the reason, uh, to, to stick to what it says in the statute, that it's sufficient, versus, uh, saying why you're going to the process?
Yeah, you, yeah, 'cause that would be the reason you're going to close, right, to talk about real estate legal, or whatever, right?
What you're saying is, so you go in and post real estate, but then somebody says, "What, real estate?" Right, so, I wanted to know, do you have to put more detail?
No.
How do you put it, detail?